Regular work session. Our first appointment is with Mr. Michael Brown, Chana County Parks Director.
Thank you for coming in, ma'am.
Is that Mrs. Fenner? Thank you. Michael, good afternoon.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman and Commissioner for having me today. It's my understanding that the commission would like a seasonal update on the lakes. Is that better?
Yes.
Okay. So I built kind of a summary that I can go through unless there's some pending questions that you guys would like to ask up front before I go through.
No, why don't you go ahead and dive into your presentation? Thanks for being here today to give us this season recap.
So I'll start with Pathfinder Reservoir. The Die Base Campground, which we constructed in 23. We did a one-year warranty walkthrough. That was completed with the engineer and the contractor. There were zero punch items. Everything looks good. From my understanding from the public, they seem to enjoy the new campsites as we've had them constructed. There's quite a bit of use for the new boat ramp that was constructed as well. We're having a little operational issues with the new dock system. It's a it's a floating dock with the fluctuating water. It moves out in and out quite a bit. With that, I think we've come up with some solutions to maybe upgrade the winches to a different style winch. We have excess cable that caused us some issues with the fluctuation. We need the cable, but different winches will allow us to manage that better. And then probably purchase some wheels for the dock sections to manage the movement in and out a little bit better. For winter storage, for example, we're going with like an Egyptian-style pipe rollers to roll it up and down to get it out of the water, out of the ice for the winter. So those are just some things we're looking at doing there. But it just it takes half a day with four guys to really get that boat ramp or boat dock in and out when we need to move it. We've removed we've replaced several outhouse doors this last season out there. We've done quite a bit of painting of picnic shelters at Bishop's, as well as painting some of the outhouse doors, the trim. So just general maintenance to try and keep it nice and tidy there. The Pathfinder footbridge. That's been difficult. In 21, we had a structural engineer. He wrote a report on it. It's very clear as to what needs to be done and repaired. I've been trying to get an estimate from that structural engineer, as well as from some different contractors before I send that out to bid. The location of that doesn't allow you to bring all equipment has to be brought in by hand. Your welding machines, everything. There's no vehicle access to it. So at this point, I think I'm probably just going to go out to bid because I can't seem to find anybody that really wants to even have a discussion about it to get a ballpark figure of what it's actually might cost. I was hoping to have that estimate, but I've been working on that for over six months now. So I prepared some bid documents I haven't don't have them finished yet. But I'd like to get that out to bid so that that work can be done in the spring. There's some sidewalk that was below the dam that ends up going underwater when the river rises there when they have high flows. We ended up conducting maintenance, cleaning those off. The Pathfinder RV Dump Station, we pumped that out this fall. There was no water for washing out your camper tanks. But that water line and water system is maintained by the Bureau of Rec. It comes off a Bureau of Rec well, so that's not our obligation. But they have repaired that water line to the station. And so in the spring, when everything gets turned back on, it should be operational. And the Pathfinder Boat Club, I've had some conversations with them. They operate the marina out there and they have 26, 28 trailers, seasonal trailers there. They've got some requests to change their lottery process to improve volunteers for operations, as well as a request for board members to possibly have a seasonal site while they are on the board. So the last two years has been difficult for them. Last year, the ice was no good for the Hog Derby. And the year before, the snow made it difficult to get there and get out. So their funding model and volunteer they rely on volunteers to do a lot of the work out there to maintain a marina, maintain their site. And they're just struggling with that with some of the Bureau of Rec requirements for when somebody dis- grandfathered into their site, leaves, it becomes an annual site and an annual lottery. And I understand, you know, folks that don't know if they'll have that site next year, probably don't want to spend a lot of time volunteering to maintain the area, improve the area versus just enjoying it for the season while they got it. So their request on their lottery process is to change it to maybe a three- to five-year lottery. You know, if they get drawn for a spot, they can have it for up to five years. All this is being discussed with the Bureau of Rec to try and modify those. That's really the summary of what's gone on in Pathfinder over the last couple of years and where we're at at this point in time. Eventually, we do have conceptual plans to improve some additional campgrounds out there. However, they're lower on the priority on some of the funding, some of the revenue that we have from the lake on how it gets spent. I can pause there if there's questions on Pathfinder.
Yeah, let's 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 pause there. I have a couple of questions, but Commissioners, any questions with respect to Pathfinder? Michael, how many campsites are out there?
Oh, that's a good question. Die Base, the new sites are 11. Those are all in a reservation. Everything else at Pathfinder is first come, first served. So there's probably 15 at Sage, 15 at Wise. I would have to actually look at the maps. Bishop's probably has 30 to 40. And then Wolf Point is more of a not really designated campsites. It's just random. There's probably 15 sites there, but because they're first come, first served, they'll pack in pretty heavy more than, you know, there'll be three or four trailers at a site. There's little dispersed camping areas where they can kind of be camped without an actual defined site with a fire ring and table. And they just pay with the envelope system at the kiosks. And then our staff goes through and checks those.
Have you have you observed in the last three years, an increase of users and usage out there at Pathfinder? Has it remained fairly constant?
No, it seems like there's been an increase at Bishop's Point mostly. It seems like there's quite a few more people using that. I think it's because with Alkova within in 21, in May of 21, when we started the reservation system, there's quite a few people that don't like that Okeechobee and Black Beach are reservation now. And so they've chosen to go over there. We still have probably close to 50%, maybe more, that's still first come, first served between Alkova and Pathfinder. And and Alkova seems to have a lot more traffic on it than it has in the past. That's from my personal experience. It's just a lot more boaters go over there for recreation. And so folks that don't like the crowds are migrating over to Pathfinder.
So you mentioned a potential change of the lottery system from seasonal to a three-to-five year.
Yeah, so that's within their concession contract that they have. That's for the club itself. And that's been their that's a request. And I've submitted that request to the Bureau of Rec. I'm not opposed to it from the Parks Department standpoint. Really, the concession contract, they pay their rent and they maintain their area. We do annual inspections of the marina and and their sites with Bureau of Rec. But I put that recommendation to the Bureau of Rec that I agree that, you know, this would help facilitate their business model.
What's the concession contract term out at for the marina at Alkova?
At Alkova, it is, I think they're 25 years. So I think it goes, I think both the concession contracts go to the term of our management agreement, which is 2041.
I'm jumping around a little bit. The footbridge work that you want to get the bid out so work can be done this spring, is that in the current year's budget?
Yes, I have I have this year's budget has a matching fund to the Bureau of Rec Fund. So we have I have budgeted $75,000 in in the Parks Budget and a match from the Bureau of Rec. However, that's starting to get a little. I don't know how much longer we'll have Bureau of Rec matching funds. But they've asked for some additional information, and that's why I've reached out to the engineer and some local contractors to try and get an estimate as to what it'll actually cost to do that work.
Commissioners, other questions regarding Pathfinder? Thank you, Michael. Keep going.
Okay, so we'll move on to Alkova. I'll start with the marina. Their new building is nearly complete. Their calls for inspections have been slow. I've been in coordination with the Building Department on that. I'll be sending them a request for that so that inspectors can get out there because obviously they'll need to get a certificate of occupancy to open in May or late April. They did reviser update and reviser master plan. That was approved by the Bureau of Rec last week, so that's good to go. That helps facilitate things. There's been a little difficulty in communication on on some of the items they've been doing during the construction that should have been brought forth in a different manner. And there's a lot of after the fact. Bureau of Rec's not real keen on that, but I've been a little bit lenient on it due to the nature of the marina serving the public. You know, we really want to get that up and running because it's a major draw for the public and it serves the public by selling fuel concessions at Alkova, which helps out quite a bit. So I think we're on the same page now, but I thought we were on the same page six months ago. And some things got done that didn't have the formal approvals they should have had. But right now, we're okay. Building Department's okay with them. They just need to do their final inspections and whatnot, so. And I think there's been some contractor issues, but I'm not involved with with that. That's the marina and their general contractor, so. The Cottonwood Dinosaur Trail is out at Cottonwood Beach. It's been there since probably the 90s. The school district uses it a lot. Casper College uses it a lot. It's an interesting trail, but it is come into disrepair due to how they constructed it. The the fall lines aren't very good. It's highly erosive soils. So I've been in contact with CWTA, the Central Wyoming Trail Alliance, and they went out month ago, maybe six weeks ago, and did an assessment. Because Park Staff, this is kind of outside of our wheelhouse a little bit on how to construct trails. So I'm waiting on receiving that written assessment. And then we're going to partner with CWTA to do some significant repairs. We're not changing the alignment because due to the paleontology there and the Bureau of Rec responsibilities. But we're going to improve it. There's a bridge there that needs replaced, the culvert needs replaced, some stormwater mitigation to improve it from washing out. It's still passable. It's steep, but I know the school district and even some of their vision students have gone out there and been able to enjoy it. But it needs needs some TLC, so we're we're working on that. We hope to have that kind of cleaned up by next May. So CWTA does a lot of work. They've done a lot of work on the mountain for us this year with the Summer Trail Master Plan. They implemented that at no cost, and they're willing to take this on. And due to the snowpack being a whole lot less at Alkova, they think they can do some of this through the winter. So we'll be partnering with them. The next big project that we started today is the Sewer Lagoon at Alkova that manages the Trailer Park, the Boat Club, the Marina, their sanitary sewer. The weir began to fail a few months back. We did some emergency sandbag implementation to keep it from leaking. That worked well, but now that this there's low flow of sewer going into it, we just I was literally there this morning. We removed the weir boards out of it and washed out that area. And we've rented an excavator and loader to basically remove the sledge from the main cell of the lagoon, which is, as far as my staff knows, hasn't been done in over 30 years. During Water Conference, it's my understanding, sledge builds, you know, you can expect a foot every 10 years. So we're kind of estimating anywhere from a foot to five feet of sledge in this main cell. So we have a plan for that and we'll be working on that through the next month. We're going to remove the sledge, put it in a second cell, allow it to dry, and then it'll be hauled to landfill next spring, early summer. That way, we're not carrying water, wet wet soil to the landfill and save on the cost of disposal. That estimated cost, if we include the wages, we're looking at $50,000 to $60,000. Due to my staff doing the work, we're probably going to impact the restricted sewer fund probably in the $20,000 range between the rental of equipment and actually more like 30 by the time we haul it to the landfill, which will be a pretty good dent in that fund, but it's a necessary thing to do. The Trailer Park Water and Sewer Design, WWC Engineering was received that contract. Probably three weeks ago, I reviewed 50% construction drawings. They're probably more like 70% now. However, during that meeting, the engineers did provide an estimate based off those 50% drawings to replace the water and sewer system, including some stormwater in the Trailer Park at $3.5 million. They'll provide a final estimate under their contract when we have 100% construction drawings received. With that being said, the Lake Sewer Fund balance is, after the lagoon repairs, is probably going to be $60,000 to $80,000 in that account, which obviously is not going to be enough to fund that. A portion of this can be funded from the Lake Fund, the Restricted Fund, because it does serve the public in our full hookup campgrounds, the public bathhouse in the Trailer Park and whatnot. So a portion of that, and I haven't figured out the percentage yet, that can be funded from the regular Lake Restricted Fund. So we could probably be $200,000, maybe $300,000 of current funds that might be available to do a $3.5 million project.
So the Lake Restricted Funds is what is what is that account balance?
Oh, that's that's our budget, so 1.6 million probably. But we budgeted 1.2 out of that, maybe.
Okay. So the net balance available for this might be a few hundred thousand dollars?
Yeah, and then based off the percentage of what's public versus private exclusive use. So at this point, there'll be future discussions to determine how to pay for this project in the next three to five years. Some of the options that that I have right now. There's the potential for lot assessments, which obviously that'll be unpopular. But that puts ownership in with the the folks that have the ski club, the Boat Club, the Marina, and all the Trailer Park based off, you know, percentage of use. Possibly use of general funds, which is, I think, is highly unlikely due to limited use of, I think there's 86% of this that would probably be private exclusive use. So I don't think the general taxpayer is going to take kindly to that. And then I've looked at some grant possibilities, but due to the nature of our system being seasonal and it's not a deprived community, you know, where some of these smaller communities get grants for replacing their water and sewer systems at the federal level because they, you know, they're on a reservation. They're in a lower-income community and whatnot. So so that'll be a discussion that we we're going to need to have to figure out how possibly do this. If the lot assessment is the avenue that we really need to go, I think that needs to be a multi-year type assessment. So it's not a lump sum. I know the city did it to me when I lived in Fort Casper and they redid our streets and and utilities there. So it's not an uncommon thing, but, you know, we don't want to impact our our users by lump sum or, you know, and and we'd have to figure out what percentage is the county, what percentage we would have have the users commit to that. Next thing I have is I have an RFP to find a consultant engineering firm for the cabin water septic study. I I have that in a rough draft form at this time. That is budgeted in this fiscal year. So once I have a draft of that, I will submit that to legal for review and then get that advertised. I did have, I reached out to a couple of engineering firms and one did provide me an estimate, which is where the budget came from for doing this type of study to figure. And what this is to do is the Bureau of Rec and in partnership with recommendations from the Health Department, we put a moratorium on any new water wells or septic systems in the Alkova Cabin area. There's 100 cabins there and depending on how the wells were drilled or where they're located with the fractured geology through there, there's likelihood that there could be contamination from septic to water wells. And also because that is not a subdivided parcel, it is one parcel owned by the Bureau of Rec, the number of water wells within that parcel can push this into a what they call UIC permitting, which is a whole nother level permitting that's underground injection control. But it does apply to water wells, not just injection systems in the oil field. So if it has to go to that, then that's a whole nother level permitting and monitoring and regulation from the DQ. Let's see, what else do I have for Alkova?
Michael, if I can, how long has the moratorium been in effect?
Since, I believe, early '22.
Yeah, I have a concern that legally, moratoria aren't supposed to be permanent. And and in the law, it's a little bit gray. How how long, you know, what is permanent versus what is temporary? And so I'm a little bit anxious about just keeping that status quo. I think that you and Heather might visit about kind of the the expediency of that and and whether we can just let it hang on for a few more years or whether this is more like we need to make some progress in the next number of months.
Yeah, so I believe when I get this RFP out and that should be, let's see, another, I should have that advertised by the end of the month and then have it awarded by the end of the year. It'll take them a few months to do that. But that study, once we have that study back, that'll give us direction as to which way we can go from a regulatory standpoint and from health standpoint. So I would expect by April or May, we we could have a real good understanding of the direction that we need to go with the cabins for for water wells and septic systems. Okay. I have been working on a site plan for a new maintenance shop at Alkova. We have that in our budget this fiscal year for design and planning. I've been working with staff to find us best site and you know, what what we really need in a shop out there. Obviously, they want all the bells and whistles. Obviously, we won't go that far. I've also been in discussion with the Sheriff's Office about them partnering with this and what they may want at that site for for a bay or a separate building for that. And so once I have that site plan drafted, I'll submit that to the Bureau of Rec because it'll be on Bureau of Rec property, not county property like ours is now, and get there okay before we go to actual engineer design on that. That budget, I believe, was $100,000 for the engineering and planning of the site. With this, that'll probably include additional day-use boat trailer parking because that's that's not even that we have an issue with now with with the amount of traffic we have there. So we're looking at wall building the shop, also providing an area for for day-use parking to improve that over on the Marina side.
Michael, what what kind of restrictions are we going to have with that being Bureau of Rec property instead of county? And would they, could we see if they would actually exchange that and give us that property instead of it being Bureau of Rec? Because that would that would actually free up a lot and take care of a lot of the the long-term ramifications for constructions or anything else. So we don't have to keep going back every time if we ever wanted to add something or do anything else, dig a hole, we don't have to get.
Yeah, I can I can reach out to them and and see if that's even viability. I know the parcel that the county owns right now is not is probably half the acreage that we're we're looking at using. But yeah, I can I can look at that and and maybe the the core footprint for the law or for the maintenance shop would would be, we could have that as county property.
I was saying it'd be a whole lot lot better for the county if we actually own that property instead of be sitting on something that we don't own and that we have to go back and ask permission every time we turn around to do something. That didn't, to me, that didn't make a lot of sense.
Okay.
Michael, and taking off of Commissioner Norris' point, I think we ought to try to be creative about it. And if it takes an act of Congress to get it conveyed to the county, then maybe we can get a 99-year lease that allows us more flexibility. So like Commissioner Norris said, we're not having to go ask for permission that takes six months to dig a hole. So so maybe we can look at managing a specific parcel a little bit differently. So, so maybe we can look at, um, managing a specific parcel a little bit differently.
And then the other thing is, Alkova, this on my desk, uh, is, uh, construction applications for the private exclusive use. The clubs, the trailers, the cabins, right now I have, uh, probably ten to twelve applications that are in different stages of review. About half of those are actually waiting on the permittees to get additional information either to the Building Department or to the Parks Department, uh, depending on if the Building Department's involved. So there, they take quite a while to get through the Bureau Rec when I have to have Bureau Rec involved. However, when I started with Parks in twenty-one, I think I had sixty-four applications that were pending with some of them being almost two years old. Uh, at this time, I think the longest one is, um, seven or eight months, and, and that's because the permittee has not provided the appropriate information to the Building Department, even after several requests, so. That's, that's it for Alkova. Um, maybe we pause there and see if there's questions on Alkova?
I have, I have a couple of questions, but Commissioners, do you have questions on Alkova for Michael? Commissioner North?
Michael, on the boat club, what exactly do they need to do as far as getting a master plan together? Getting that straightened out and so it's a professional level so that we can actually look at it and have something closer to what the marina actually did.
You were talking about the boat club?
Yep, yep, I'm just saying, you know, I know the, we had the master plan for the marina and that was done a long time ago and that was very detailed and everything else and it was approved and I guess I'm wondering why, why we don't have something similar for the boat club, if that's what they want to do, showing existing.
Well, I, I can address that now or I can wait till the next section, which is Bureau Rec and, and it's detailed in there. I, I bring it up in there, so. Really, uh, so the Casper Boat Club, um, contacted Higginman's office or an individual from then and who then contacted Bureau Rec about lack of approval of their master plan. I've worked on this since twenty-one, um, there was no substance there. The plan I have currently by probably the fourth or fifth individual that I've worked with over three years, it's close, so I'm going to submit that to the Bureau Rec. Um, I've reviewed it. However, I have to translate that into digital format, uh, which I have not had time to do because their site plan is the size of this table versus, uh, sending me a digital, um, site plan. Um, but they had some numbering issues, employee housing issues that they didn't really address correctly in there. They left out quite a bit, um, their maintenance, ongoing maintenance that should be in the master plan isn't really detailed, like, you know, what they typically need to be doing annually, you know, whether it's, uh, gravel in the road, um, you know, combing out Hobie Beach, uh, repairing, uh, stormwater washouts there, dredging the docks that, that get sediment rolled into them, electrifying the docks, um, just general maintenance. Their ongoing, and then their capital improvement projects, um, isn't very concise, in my opinion. I wrote the master plan before I was with the county for the ski club, uh, that plan was provided to the boat club. That one went through approval. We, the ski club had a committee, um, that worked on that, gathered all the information, uh, assembled it, put it together. Um, I don't think, I think I've received some of their licenses and permits, you know, alcohol permit, uh, Health Department clearance for kitchen, things like that are, are nice to have in their master plans to show that they're, um, up to date on those, uh, because, because it's a lot permit for the clubs, not a concession agreement. The, uh, Bureau Rec review is every five years. But, uh, I think we have a plan that Bureau Rec may or may not have, um, request to revise, um, so that'll be submitted in the next week or so to them. Does that answer your questions?
So you're gonna turn to BOR next?
What's that?
You're gonna turn to BOR?
Yes, yes, up to this point, I have not had a master plan from the boat club that, um, I felt was sufficient enough to submit to the Bureau Rec. I understand what the Bureau Rec's requirements are in a master plan and they just, they just weren't meeting that. So there was no point in submitting a plan that wasn't gonna get, um, really even reviewed. Do you have anything else on Alkova?
Nope, I think we've got about ten minutes left, so I don't know how.
I'll, I'll run through the, the Bureau Rec's next section, uh. So my primary contact at the Bureau Rec is leaving on the fifteenth, um, moving over to, uh, another federal department and position. Their supervisor will be my primary contact, the projects will be delegated, uh, to subordinates in the meantime till that position's filled, so I don't know if that's three months, six months, a year, so I will be, um, dealing with multiple personalities, so we'll, um, we'll see how that goes. Um, I had a pretty good rapport with the individual that was my primary contact, uh, we worked pretty well together. There were some things that, that they wanted that I disagreed with, um, overall, but, uh, so we'll see how that goes, but there's some flux that'll be going on, so we'll see how that works. The trailer park lottery, uh, revision was approved and has been implemented, um, it seems to be working well. The major change there was, when, when we draw for a lot that's for sale, we were drawing five names and, um, those names would be back in the main lottery pool. So the next trailer that went up for sale may have the same names drawn again, and so somebody may be drawn four or five times for eight trailers for sale. Now we remove that name from the main pool. However, every trailer lot that's for sale gets that name if it was drawn. Um, so this provides more names to the people selling their trailers and provides a larger opportunity for the public to be able to purchase a trailer. However, the change there is if the trailer doesn't sell, the old lottery system allowed them to, um, basically had to be offered to, the lot had to be offered to the first person drawn on their list. Now it states that the, that lot, if it doesn't sell in the time period, it reverts back to the county, county parks to determine best use for it. So we can decide to do it in, uh, another lot, put it in the lottery and draw names again, or we can um, decide that maybe that lot's best for stormwater mitigation, or maybe that lot's best for, uh, overnight rental, those types of things, or maybe that lot's best to provide additional spacing between trailers. And right now we have, uh, the third lot that was a vacant trailer that we had to, um, go through legal to get authorization to remove. That lot's sitting vacant right now. I haven't, uh, proposed any ideas on what we should do with that. The only thing I did with that lot is I offered it to another trailer owner because they're in a major stormwater flooding area. If they wanted to move their, um, trailer and deck and all over to there, but they chose not to. So right now it's just kind of sitting, sitting vacant, trying to decide what best use for that is. And I hope to have that decision made by, um, to start it next season.
I have a question, Mr. Chairman. Let's say that I have a lot out there and I want to sell it. And I get five names from you and none of the people want to buy anything. Does that mean I lose my lot?
So if you cannot sell your trailer by May nineteenth of that, so the trailers go up for sale, uh, so if you put your trailer up for sale on May twentieth, you have until next May nineteenth to sell it.
Now, if you, if you give them the names and none of those people want to buy it, or they did?
Well, you also get provided all the names for every other trailer that's been put up for sale that hasn't purchased the trailer, so this last year, we had eight trailers, so that's forty names. So if you can't sell it to somebody for forty names, then I, you know, we have nothing to say about how much you sell the trailer for. Parks Department is not involved with, with the purchase of the trailer. We're involved with renting the lot, so it's the lot itself that the Parks manages.
So if the person doesn't sell it, they will continue to pay the lot, why should they lose the lot?
Because that's how the system's been set up by the Bureau Rec. And it's been this way, I think, since the nineties, but I'm not exactly sure when that started. But the Bureau Rec set up the lottery system, uh, to provide an opportunity for more of the public to have a chance at it and I'm on the fence either way. The original intent of that trailer park was not to be long-term rentals for mobile homes.
I understand that, but wouldn't it be better the person to go out and actually find a buyer and know that he's secure rather than, if he gets five names from you, I know there was somebody that got some names and two of the names were a married couple and neither, they weren't gonna buy anything. And so the person could be, could lose out because he didn't have people that were interested in it, at least in that little grouping of names that he's given. It seems, it doesn't seem reasonable to take the person's lot if, if he continues to pay the rent and let him find another buyer.
So all I can say is there are loopholes to the system and pretty much everybody's figured out the loopholes to the system. But per, per the Bureau Rec direction, this is, this is how we have to manage the trailer park at this time. I've had conversations with them, I believe, uh, a couple of the Commissioners have had conversations with them, uh, with me there and, uh, they can probably attest to the, the inability to, to move on this, um, from the federal level. I guess that's a nice way to say it.
Well, I don't like it. I don't think we should just take the position that it's because the Bureau of Rec says and that's how it's gonna be for now and into the future, but I think it is something we're not gonna solve today, uh, if we want to, uh, set aside some, some time to engage with you a little bit more and try to brainstorm. That, that might be good. I know Commissioner Freel worked on this issue last summer, as I recall. Commissioner Freel, did you have a, a comment or a response?
Well, I do. Um, you know, in, in my conversations with, y- you and I were there and we talked to him and simply explaining that there are loopholes and we were by the Bureau of Rec, if they can figure out a way around the loophole, then they can. And that's the way it is, but the question that I have is, you know, the comment that's been, made by the Bureau of Rec is that they want to be able to allow more public access or more public to have access to being able to be in that trailer court, which flies right in the face of having a lottery system because you're limiting people to five names every time that, uh, trailer is put up. Um, you're not allowing people to sell their property on their own to whoever or have a Realtor come in there or, or even a for-sale by owner that to open it up and sell it to whoever. So I guess my question to you, Michael, because I just was sitting here thinking about this. It, is the Bureau of Rec the one that says how the lottery system works or that you have to have a lottery system in place? And what I mean by that, are they the ones that set the rules and say five names per trailer and that's it? Because if they truly want to open this up to the public, to have, allow more people in the public to have access to living in that trailer court, why would we not, every time a trailer comes up, hand them an entire list of everybody that wants to buy a trailer out there and let them go through the list? If they don't sell it by the time that that, the season is over and they've gone through that list, that's on them. But why are we limiting them to five per trailer that goes up? Why not just give them the whole list?
Well, um, that's a possibility and I can, I can revise the, I can draft the lottery process, and propose that to Bureau Rec and then they can review and approve or deny. Uh, I based, the previous lottery system was five names, it's been that way for a long time, so I just went with that process, but I did get it improved to where there's more names. There's not doubled up, tripled up, same name, and we could probably even change it to where there's one per household versus, you know, husband, wife, um, like they were mentioning, but we can, I can definitely draft that, have you guys review it and then submit it to Bureau Rec and see if they'll approve it or deny it.
I guess my point is it would still be a lottery system itself. You have your system in place. If people want to buy a trailer, they have to get on that list. We're not asking to open it up to for-sale by owners or, or however you want to sell it. But you have a lottery system in place, that's what they wanted and it just doesn't, it, it makes zero sense that if you're trying to give access to the public to be in there, why you wouldn't just give them that entire list? So I, I would ask that you do draft that up and bring it in front of the Commission so that, you know, to take back to the BOR and say, look, if people put their name on the list, they should have an opportunity across the board. If there's forty of them, if there's a hundred of them, they should all have the opportunity to have a chance to buy it and anybody selling should have a chance to sell it to one of those people on the list.
All right, um, I think that's a good idea. I'd also like to see a component that has some sort of public notice. That to me gives, is the best for everybody because it gives the sellers and potential buyers the opportunity to at least know that there is an opportunity, an opportunity to acquire. So I think we'll work with you on that. Um, it's gonna take some time and some back and forth with the Bureau of Rec. Wouldn't it be cool if we could get this in place by May first? I don't know if that's realistic, but what do you think is realistic for you to get a draft at the Commission and come back and had a work session?
Yeah, I can do that. I could probably have that within a month. The other concern that Bureau Rec brings up is, um, they don't like the windfall profits of the sale of trailers on federal property because the way it works is you're selling the physical trailer. Um, you're not selling the lot. And so, you know, a nineteen-seventies trailer that anyplace else in the county would be worth five grand is worth a whole lot more if it's sitting on a lot that's, uh, federal property located in the lake. And that's one of their issues with, um, but the lottery system doesn't mitigate that, change that, what those trailers sell for.
Mr. Chairman?
Yeah.
If I could just add in there though, I, that makes zero sense also. Who cares what it gets sold for? You don't have anything to say about how much you get sold for, and at the end of the day, the BOR is still going to get the amount of money that, that is put onto each lot to lease it out. It doesn't matter who owns it, it doesn't, it, the person that's leasing it is paying that same amount. It has zero to do with what's sitting on that lot and how much it's being sold for.
All right, I want to shoot the messenger. Um, I agree with you and I think that it's like in a grazing lease on BLM land. Just because my cow is a registered thirty thousand dollar heifer and your cow is some grubby thing that you brought up from Texas, broken mouth, no teeth, that's not the BLM's concern. And, and if I have an amazing set of improvements on a cabin site or a trailer site, that's not our concern and it's not the BOR's concern. So I, I think we do need to have this discussion, look forward to it. I'm sorry, we're running short on time, so let's get back to whatever else on BOR.
The only other thing I have is June fifth, there was a letter of concern from, uh, an individual in the trailer park. Um, I submitted a response to them June twenty-first, uh, and I copied the Commissioners on that. Um, there'd been no further discussion. I've had nobody contact me to that response um, until, uh, last week. Senator Barasso's office contacted the area manager of the Bureau Rec, um, so at that point in time, I provided that letter that I submitted to the individual in the trailer park and the Commission to the Bureau Rec. Um, so that's just another US representative, uh, contact that I wanted to make you guys aware of.
Very good. Michelle, if you would make a note, because I'll probably forget, um, be in touch with Michael so that we can get him back, uh, either in, at our second meeting in December or maybe our, I don't know about our first meeting in January, that might be. Or maybe our, I don't know about our first meeting in January, that might be pretty busy, but kind of that timeframe and, and we'll. One of the things I'd like to have Michael and Heather is a copy of Bureau of Rec management contracts with other jurisdictions. Do we have a database of those? I, I want to see if we're getting better or worse or the same treatment. And, and I want to see how much flexibility there might be. I always hate to reinvent the wheel. And, and if, and if, by gosh, if, if three other parks departments in the United States are getting way better deals than us, we need to know that and we need to, um, get into, get into a discussion with the B O R. Because it seems like there are new regulations that come up. Um, you talked about four to five contact people in the last three years. Um, I don't know if that results in kind of a change in focus or direction on their part and makes it harder for you. But I, I think overall, this, this management, um, there are enough management difficulties here that, uh, you know, we, we need to have a good feeling of where we are and then we need to think about where we're going. I, I, if, if things are just going to get more and more difficult because of additional or different changed regulations, I think we need to have a conversation about that. All right. Anything else for Michael before we let him go and move to our next appointment?
Mr. Chairman, it's just a question, just generally. Are we able to get the people from the B O R in here and have a conversation with them, one of our meetings about this? Because it just doesn't seem to, nothing seems to be happening since the last two years. And Mr. Frill's made all the right points. And it should be taken care of on behalf of our citizens because this, this was well said, Mr. Frill, is what I'm saying.
Commissioner Laird, thanks. I, I think that we certainly can get B O R representatives in here. But I think we need to spend a little more time and do some additional homework. And really have a, a clear picture of what we want, whether it's changes or, you know, changes in the lottery system, changes of the whole thing. I, but I, I think we should meet with Michael in a month or so. Um, and then maybe we do have a, a meeting with them, whether it's to discuss changes or just to have kind of the eye to eye.
So that's been requested in the past and the response from the Bureau of Rec is they would like the commission to provide basically a list of questions that you're going, they want, you guys want answered from them, um, beforehand so that they can be prepared and whatnot. And that didn't ever come fruition, um, in the past requests.
Did you want to weigh in on that?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I would just weigh in on that, that Michael and I did go out there and have a discussion with them and we really did not get anywhere. Um, and due to that fact, Michael is now dealing with people from Senator Brasso's office and, and, uh, Higginman's office because members of the trailer court out there have taken it to the higher level. So I think it can be done, but they definitely want a list of questions ahead of time. And from what I saw through our, our meeting, we didn't make any headway at all.
I, I don't know about questions, but I think it's fair for them to ask for, um, some topics or an agenda. Um, you know, I, I think we could come up with six hundred questions. Um, but I think just we need kind of a higher level discussion with them and we tell them maybe some general areas. And if they don't want to meet with us, then we can go to our federal congressional delegation as well. And, and I know they return calls at, at a higher level sometimes. All right. Um, thank you very much, Michael. We appreciate the update. Uh, we'll look forward to hearing from you again on, on these issues and let us know if you need anything else.
All right. Thank you.
Next appointment is with Garrett Rottenheffer, Facilities Director, Purpose, Library Maintenance Items.
Good afternoon.
Hi.
You don't like, you don't like the new lights?
We have new lights.
I was hoping you'd notice.
Thank you for the new lights.
Yeah, that's all right. Yes, sir. Um, okay. So the memo I sent this week, um, is in regard to a maintenance update for the library, which I had, was not ready with, um, in our meeting in August. Um, so I just wanted to touch base after walking through the building, um, with Mrs. Scroggins and, and discussing with Fred on some of the main issues that we see, foresee coming, um, that need to updated in the building sooner rather than later. Um, I'll start with, some of the rooftop units there are nearing the estimated service life. They are, some are tw- over twenty years old and, and the newest ones are just right at nineteen years old. Um, and those two being the fifteen ton. Um, York units that provide heat to, and heat and cooling to the second floor library wing. Um, I've given options on how we can go about if we decide to replace one unit or we replace two. Um, or all four in, in a time span which I will let the commission decide. Uh, that's, you want to have any questions for?
What's, what's the lead time for and, and install time? If we were to give you a thumbs up on one of these units today, um, is this going to happen before next fiscal year?
Um, depending on the size of the unit, um, would be the lead time. I, I, I don't see this packet, um, the four-ton unit, I s- I see being pretty readily accessible. Um, I, I think the fifteen-ton units would be a little harder to get a hold of. So my guess and estimate would probably be maybe twenty-four to thirty-six months, or sorry, weeks.
Uh, for the bigger units or the, the small four or five ton?
Um, the smaller units being that sooner window and the larger window, or the tail end of that window being the bigger units.
Okay, go ahead.
Got a question.
Uh, hang on.
Before, before you move too much further. Um, looking at these units, um, obviously we just went through this at the jail. How's the roof look up there?
It's good.
We aren't going to have to do anything to make sure that, I, I just want to make sure that if we're going to do something, that we, that we get everything taken care of and not, you know, in, in the right sequence and not, not go the other direction and then have to come back, put a new roof on and then come back, or put a new units on and then have to come back, take them off and then cut holes in the roof or do something else to make it work.
No, sir. That, that roof is, is fairly newer. I believe it's still under warranty. Um, I'd have to look exactly what date it was, it was upgraded, but, um, I do know that it is in good shape and, and don't have many punctures or, we really haven't had many roof leaks that I'm aware of over there at all.
Okay. So say that again, as far as the timeframe, as far as the?
Now, this is just, that's just a ballpark guess, but I, I'm assuming you could get it, um, anywhere from twenty-four to thirty-six weeks.
So twenty-four on the small units?
Mm-hmm. And thirty-six to the bigger ones.
So basically we would be just about looking at?
Yes, it'd be something that we would probably set next summer.
Yeah, but we could, we'd be putting that next, the next fiscal.
Yes, sir.
Not, not this budget.
Yep. And, and that's kind of what this, this is leaning towards. It's just kind of an update of, of, um, keeping you in the loop of what to see here in the next fiscal in the future.
Okay. I guess that's going to be the main thing.
I had a question, Mr. Chairman.
Yeah.
Commissioner Laird. So is your recommendation to just start this now? As opposed to putting it off? Because every time I hear about putting things off possibly, then we come back and it's, price has doubled.
Correct. And, and you make a great point. If, if we do wait till the next fiscal, you know, then we're six months from June. Um, getting those rooftops set. If we, if we go ahead and get them purchased now, um, then, then they'll be here by the time that fiscal starts. We can set them in the summer, have them up and running.
So is that your recommendation?
Yes, sir. That is my recommendation. It also is a recommendation because, um, now I've been told and I don't know when this will go in effect, but the government is trying to get away from four-ten A refrigerant. Again, so they're trying to change refrigerants. Once again, so these units could spike increase in the next six to eight months. Or it could be sooner than that. You know, I, I just can't say. I didn't get a timeframe on when the suppliers thought that that would happen.
So were we having, did we have to pay for the units upfront when we ordered them for the jail or do we pay them for them when we got, when they were delivered?
We did pay for them upfront.
Okay.
You do an R F P. If the commission said go with one or go with two or go with four, you do an R F P for that?
Correct. If it's over, over the fifty thousand. If we did one to two units, we can keep it under that.
And so the sixteen or the thirty-six, that's the install and?
That is installed. Yep. That's equipment and installed. And that, that again is, is just a rough, that's right now. Um, that could change five to ten percent in, by January or after tomorrow. It's, it's hard to say.
Okay. Well, why don't you talk to us a little bit about egress lighting while we let it ruminate on, uh, on these rooftop units?
Yes, sir. Um, this is, this egress lighting is part of the M O A, um, conditions report that the library had done in two thousand and thirteen. Um, some of these have been upgraded and some have not. Uh, I did learn some new information that the, the number I have is the eighteen fixtures. It is only twelve that need upgraded into battery backup. So if we lose power in that building, twelve of the eighteen fixtures are not going to be lit up. Um, so that price would most likely drop probably thirty percent. Um, from the, from the price I've listed there.
What do you think the timeframe would be to get those switched over if we gave you a green light?
I think that's something that we could have done, um, in the next two to three months. I think lining out a contractor and getting that done wouldn't be any issues. Um, I think that would probably run fairly smoothly and.
Garrett, that's a life safety issue.
Yes, sir.
So that's something that we do need to get done. And I would personally, I'd prefer that we move forward with that. Uh, I know we can't take a vote on it right now, but I, I would, personally, I think that that's something that needs to be addressed sooner, sooner, much sooner instead of later.
Agreed. And, and that's these three main items I've brought to you in front of you today are, are things that I see that we should jump on. Um, rather than, than sit back and wait, um, to get done. And, and with that life safety, I'll just step into the next one. Um, there's two. And these are for ADA accessibility and getting up to code. One ramp in the basement coming down in front of the elevator is not up to code. It's too steep and narrow. Um, my suggestion would be to widen it, lengthen it out if we have the room. If not, we can short, shorten the first step, build a landing and then drop it off down to the right, um, towards the Crawford room and towards the children's library in the basement and, and widen that out. Um, and then the second ramp is just, uh, use for occupants, um, handicap occupants to be able to use the stage in the Crawford room. There is no ramp going up to the stage at the Crawford room.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Miller.
When the ramp was initial, when it was put in, was it per code?
Uh, I'm not sure. I would assume it is.
I mean, we don't need to go backwards.
Right.
And look at things that were in code now aren't in code. Doesn't mean we have to bring them to code unless we start doing things. So it, it's just, I'm looking at options.
Um, I, that's some information that I didn't look into that deeply. Um, I can and and see if we are grandfathered in on that aspect.
If you would, please.
Yes, sir. I can.
I'd like to hear from Mrs. Scroggins. Um, Lisa, maybe you can, um, share some of your insight with the ramps and whether the, that's been a public need or it hasn't been an issue. Uh, just to give us a little color, if you would, on, on the two ramps.
Yes, sir. And actually I have Fred with me. He's our facilities. I'm going to let him sit because he's in a walking boot. No, I'm good. Thank you, Garrett. Um, first of all, thank you to the commission for Garrett and sending him.
Hey, Lisa, Lisa, you'll need to talk to the mic so that the people, so it's recorded. Yeah, that way it's recorded. So, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for sending Garrett to the library and doing a walkthrough. He didn't get to go through the entire building because we had, um, our facilities guy was out on extended medical. And so I know that they're going to get together, um, in the future. It's really exciting to see some of these things being addressed. But to, to your question about ramps, um, so Garrett and I haven't really discussed his recommendation to you. I don't know exactly what he's recommending. Um, but those are standing, those are known issues in the library. I don't really know what his plan is as far as remediate, remediating those issues. I think, I think I just heard him say to extend it to make it longer and to widen it. So Garrett, are we talking about the ramp that goes into the Crawford room itself or the one that comes down by the boiler?
Uh, the one down by the boiler, um, coming out of that, right by that public restroom.
Right. Okay. So then I don't know if we can widen it because that public restroom is right there next to it. Um, these gentlemen would have a lot more information about that than I would. But it does, it's adjacent to a restroom. And then the length of the ramp, if you've been down into the, um, children's area, this is in the children's, um, lobby area and going up into the friends area. And it is used a lot. Um, I don't know how you would lengthen that unless you twisted it. So. Gotcha. Okay. So I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman, you asked me to come up to address what then? So I just trying to get all that straight in my head.
Either what health safety issues or what inconveniences, um, have you and your staff and the public encountered as a result of A, not having a ramp in the Crawford room up to the stage? And B, this, this ramp that might be too steep or too narrow?
Okay. So the ramp, um, that we're talking about that's too steep and too narrow, it is, um, an access, a barrier access issue for staff and for community members when they're attending friend sales. But it's really a barrier to staff on a daily basis. So that ramp and then, um, there's another ramp that actually goes into the Crawford room. That's like you go one way or the other way to get to this one area. Um, so we have staff offices there, um, that's accessible only by, from that floor. Only by those ramps or only by stairs coming from the other, the other direction. So, um, it is not accessible. I know we had a staff member within this last year, I think, don't call me to that, but who, um, had an injury and was in a walking boot and had a very difficult time accessing her workspace. Because this, the angle and the steep ramp makes a walking boot hard. That being said, gentleman sitting next to me, Fred Parsons, um, is currently in a walking boot and his workspace is in that, on that floor as well. So it makes it hard. So he is currently not able to access part of his workspace because he can't safely go up and down in his work boot. So we've made arrangements and accommodations and we're good with that. But it is, it is a problematic issue that I would love to see us explore addressing. And I've received written complaints from community members, um, about this ramping question. And I know that at one point Sally Schumer, um, did an article about it in the Cowboy State Daily. Is that who she writes for? Whatever publication she writes for, she, um, brought that particular ramp. To call, or she brought that to the public's attention. Um, as far as this, as far as the stage, um, I think I've never really put much thought into a ramp to the stage, um, because we just, maybe because of accessibility, don't use it the way that we could or should. And so if there were a ramp, if, if we could put in a ramp in a way that doesn't cut into the middle of our programming space, um, then we could utilize that stage. Currently, we use the, the front part of a stage in front of a curtain. Um, and the whole back is just storage because there, it's not really accessible, but it's not a really high stage. So I don't know how far out that ramp would come into our space. I would love to see, um, that explored and give us more access to that space as well. More access to that space as well.
Other questions?
Anything to add to that?
Other questions for Fred or Lisa? Um, Garrett, your memo indicates that as a means of egress. The ramp is required to meet building code and so. I, I need a little clarification because I think maybe Commissioner Mellon was referring to. The grandfather concept, old buildings, new code oftentimes don't match up. Is this a situation that would not be grandfathered?
No, it, it, it should still be grandfathered depending on, on building and, and the type. Now, if it was added on, at a later date and that, that's just the size that they chose because that's the room they had, then that's a different situation.
Okay. Um, my, my. My instinct is to, um, act ASAP on the egress lighting and on one or more of the boilers. Um, but have you and Lisa and Fred do a little more homework on the ramps?
Okay.
Um, maybe the commission would wanna move forward with both, maybe neither, maybe one. I, I don't know, but that's just me speaking right now and I know we'll get into, uh, some additional discussion. On, uh, on the lighting and, and on the boilers here in a minute, but, um, commissioners just opening it up to you all for. Other commentary on maybe first on the ramps. And then just second on, on where you want to head with the other items. Commissioner North?
I do think that we need to find out on ramps when that was put in there and find out what the, what the code was at that time because. Number one, with the current restrictions in design. That thing would have to go all the way to the other side of the Crawford room. As long as it would have to be. Um, and I think that's something that sometimes is unrealistic. You know, it's fine for new construction, but it doesn't always work for going back in and doing something. And I do think that we need to look and see. If it was in compliance at the time. And we leave it alone. Um, I do think that there's some, there may be some other options that we have for the stage. Um, as far as access goes, there's some options that would be a whole lot cheaper and a lot easier.
Well, maybe.
Accessibility on that ramp.
Um, maybe you can also break down what the two ramps would cost because I see eighty-four hundred and sixty dollars. I know that's. Kind of a ballpark number as I understood from you.
That is, but that, and I didn't describe the third ramp in question as Lisa did, um, but that's all, that's. That's all three ramps. That's not just two.
Okay, well, it's, it's not all the money in the world.
Right.
But I think we still need to be smart about it. Um, so if, if you'll. Visit about everything from kind of layout and logistics and maybe get us a number for each of those three ramps. Um, and get back to us at, at your mutual conveniences. That would be helpful.
Yes, sir.
That would be my concern is basically not the cost. But the, but the footprint, those ramps are gonna take up if, uh, you know, when you start. Talking on eight foot ramp for every nine inches. Um, it doesn't take, take very long to figure out. You're gonna have a really, really long ramp.
Yes, sir.
So I'm, I'm just looking at it that way as far as what the footprint is and how much room we're actually gonna lose as far as. In those areas. So, um, so if it's grandfathered, it's grandfathered. If there's other options that we could look at. Then let's, let's explore those and see what we can do, but.
My, my last comment would be even if it's grandfathered, um, if it's gonna provide, um. Better, better functionality for employees and the public. It's not all the money in the world and, and maybe we do move forward with it, but, but again, that's more conversation down the road. I think we need to do fixtures right away. Any commissioners concerned about moving forward, giving Garrett the green light? On the replacement of those, um, egress lighting, battery backup fixtures?
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner.
Real quick, um, approximate cost for twelve instead of eighteen is three thousand dollars. Um, just ballpark, a little over that actually, um. So I, I think that needs to be done ASAP and, and don't get me wrong, Garrett. I'm not saying that we shouldn't. Adjust that ramp if necessary. I'm just wondering, is it the best? Um, or cost effective, right? Process of what we're doing. If it needs to be done, it needs to be done. If not, then hey. Um, and I think there are some other options for the, the stage. But yeah, no, we need to move forward with lighting ASAP.
So, um, we can't make a decision right now, but you've got, I think, uh, informal thumbs up. And then, um, if you and Heather can work on getting that finalized. So we can sign whatever needs to be signed and, and that work can be done. As far as paying for it, we're gonna need to figure that out too. Our chief budget officer is otherwise engaged today. Uh, with elections, so, um, I'm not exactly sure what the answer is, uh, for that. I know we can figure it out. Um, other ideas?
Oh, I, I do have one question. Um. You talking about?
Just the lighting so far.
Yeah, that this is lighting on the eighteen, if it would go all eight or twelve. Well, I know, but there was. Originally was talking about eighteen. The reason why I bring that up is for continuity. How old are the others? Is it gonna make it easier to get parts across the board if we're replacing them all? Because sometimes that is worth changing out. Items that are on that intermediate marginal area where they're gonna have to be replaced in a couple of years or something else. And I'm just wondering for the cost differential, if that's something that we need to. I mean, it's not that much more. I mean, not, not really, but not when you're talking about it, but if it makes a difference on what we have. And if you have continuity all the way through, it's a lot easier to carry one or two spare bulbs. Than it is to carry a whole bunch of different ones. And that's, I mean. Obsolescence is a horrible thing and it bites every one of us all the time. And so. I'm just, as far as that goes, that's the reason why I'm asking that question. Is that something that would make more sense?
No, sir. I don't, I don't believe so. I think, um, the lighting that's, or the egress lighting that's already in there is fairly. Standard. Um, there's nothing that really changes in those very much. So I think we just go. With what they're, what is there and we'll just swap out the. Twelve that are there for battery backups.
Okay. Well, I, I don't have any problem. I just, but I think that that's something, those are questions that need to be asked when we, when we're looking at stuff like this.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
So with respect to the. Boiler, uh, the, the boilers, the mechanical units, we've got four, um. To replace the, the, I think you. Told us kind of the priority, the four ton unit is in a worse shape.
It is.
That's sixteen thousand, five hundred and forty. Um, my feeling is that we authorize that to go forward. Um, seven and a half ton adding that, um, basically. Does a little more than double the price to thirty-six thousand, eight hundred. I think we can figure that out too. So my personal thought is that we greenlight that. Doing the other two, it jumps up there to hundred and sixty-six thousand. Kind of feeling like we ought to maybe have another discussion come budget session and see, um. If and when, uh, we do those, but I'd sure like us to move forward ASAP with essentially what is option two. Uh, commissioners, uh, any thoughts or response on that?
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Mellon.
On your fifteen ton or how are they, what condition are they good to go for another year?
Yes, sir. And that's why I put them at the bottom. Um, I, the four ton is, is in the roughest shape. Followed by the seven and a half ton. Um, the four tons, one that we work on can continuously. Where we spend quite a bit of time. Fred is working on it quite a bit of time as well and, and that's, that's one that's been a little bit of a headache for us. Um, so yes, the seven and a half and the four ton units show much more use and damage, um, than the, the two fifteen tons.
Is one of the fifteen tons worse than the other or?
No, they're, they're pretty, pretty square units.
Pretty good.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Um, just their ages is the only issue that we have with them. Uh, eventually, looking forward, that's, they're gonna, they're gonna need replaced.
Are the controls gonna work with, that are currently installed? Are those controls gonna work with those?
Yes, sir. Yes, they will.
Updated units?
Mm-hmm. Yep. Everything at the library on those two units is still pneumatic. So.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Yeah, with what you've just said, I, I do think that option two is our best option at this point in time and then we can. Give a little bit more time to plan for the fifteen ton units. If they're in good condition right now and they're gonna make it, then. There's no need. Taking that step at this point in time, but yeah, if we get the others taken care of it, I do believe that we need to do that and. Work on our preventative maintenance and replacement instead of waiting until the last minute and that. You, you know me, I've been saying that in all of our, all of our buildings all the way around the county is fix it before it gets to the point where we can't afford to. Have it down. So.
Yes, sir.
I'm in favor of option two. I just wanna go back just briefly to the ramps. My opinion on that is they might've been coded at the time they were built, but we have a functioning building that we're responsible for today. And if we know the code's changed and it's different today, we should probably get in compliance with that. Not that we have to. But I'd hate for something to happen and then come back and say, well, you knew we weren't, you weren't up to code and so and so got injured on this. So. I'm in favor of moving forward with fixing those just so that we are compliant.
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner.
Uh, I agree with Mr. Freel. The ramps need to be fixed right away in my opinion.
I can get you better numbers and, and a more definitive on exactly what each ramp will be and broke up that way and more information.
Which, which was the plan.
Yes, sir.
Good. All right. I will get together with our clerk and, um, get some options for which accounts these, uh. The, uh, light fixtures and the two, um, mechanical units, um, what budget line that ought to come from. And then she or we or I will report back and, and we'll, um. Know how to deal with it on the fiscal side, but I think that's the green light on those, those items. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, uh, let's take a just couple minute break, uh, before our legal update with our county attorney. All right, we're back in session. Um, uh, we are here to now visit with our esteemed county attorney Heather Duncan-Balone.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, I guess to start, are there any questions for me about any of the items on the agenda for the meeting this evening? Or anything you'd like to, to go over?
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner North.
The only one I have on the consent agenda that I had question about is the, is the generator part of the overall budget for the health department? Is that all, was that all inclusive or is this an add-on?
I can speak to it perhaps, but Jared, maybe you should go first and I'll fill in.
Mr. Chair, Commissioner, I believe that it was part of the overall uh, budget to begin with. Uh, the plan uh, was to uh, try to get a grant to help pay for that. Uh, as Anna had been um, exploring uh, di- different funding sources and continues to explore different funding sources for the overall project. Uh, I, my recollection is that it was included in the overall budget to begin with though.
Okay, so that's all I was, that wa- that was my only concern about that was that it was included in the original budget.
And, and I think in fairness to Jared and myself, um, we were really focused in on these items six months ago, and um, what I recall is that we did have a budget for the generator. But we also, I can't remember if the budget had that seventy-five thousand dollars as the partial payment for it. So there might be a little bit of a, a change with regard to those funds, because Anna did identify those funds late in the spring, as I recall, so we can get Anna and Tim Dallas. Uh, we can, we can get Anna and Tim Schenk to give us the at, the exact information, Commissioner North. But that's about all I can recall. Garrett, I don't know if you want to add anything to that or not, or if that's. Okay, good.
Yeah, that, that's fine. That was just, that was the only question I had about it. I just wanted to make sure that that wasn't something that was going to be tacked on to the end.
Perfect. And I apologize, that's my recollection too. It has been just a little while on that.
Mr.
Yeah.
Chairman. Um, yeah. Is this the final mail in this uh, Wardwell Sewer District thing?
Yes, yep, this would be the final thing that's needed. This is needed by the Department of Revenue, so they can terminate the mill levy and um, consider the, the district fully dissolved.
Okay, thank you.
I think those are all the questions uh, with respect to tonight's agenda.
Okay, um, with respect to other items, I don't have a whole lot for you. Um, the Dutchman solar permit hearing is tomorrow in Converse County. Um, I'll a- attend, uh, the sheriff will attend and so will Brian Oliver from the Fire District. We're asking for just over, um, I think eighty-seven thousand for overtime costs for the sheriff and then some equipment for the Fire District. And then if you guys have any questions about any particular projects, I'll, I'm happy to answer, but that's really all I had to kind of update you on at, at this particular time.
So let's talk about Castle Mountain Biathlon Club. Um, I do see Mr. Brown is still here, so just in case we have some additional questions. You recent, um, I think late morning or uh, over the lunch hour, the documents. I didn't know if that meant that you had heard from Mr. Holsher.
I, I have not. I just wanted to, uh, I, I think Deirdre commented he was, he did reach out to her. She contacted him. He's going to going to send an email um, with respect to the, the compliance concerns that were brought up by the building department. So when I get that, I'll I'll share that with the commission, but I don't have that as of yet.
So we don't know what that, the tone or tenor of the email will be?
No, Mr. Chairman, I, I don't.
And I, I didn't necessarily, when I sent that um, response, I didn't necessarily feel he needed to respond chapter and verse um, to all of the items on that, but, but we needed to make sure that we were moving in the right direction. Um, and, and I, you know, if there are one or two items that he needs to have more conversation with the building department or Michael about, then that's fine. But if they take a hard line and say, we're not going to do anything ever, then I'd be real reluctant to enter into a grooming agreement or um, a new uh, whatever the other agreement is, um, operating agreement um, at this point. So it does look like if these three bulleted items in your email are the last items, then we're darn close, I think. Mr. Brown, you know this better than anybody else in the room. Did you have consternation or concern with any of those, those items? And I can give you a copy of them. This isn't a printed copy, but Heather, my understanding is the stuff that was highlighted is the stuff that Pat Holsher had proposed?
Yes, that, that is correct.
Okay, so we'll give Michael a second to, to look at those. And then, Michael, if you have anything else you want, it's kind of a speak now or forever hold your peace on other um, language or changes or issues with the operating agreement or the grooming agreement. I guess the grooming agreement is a one-year term. The operating agreement is a two-year term, and so commission, are we I know we had talked about having a shorter rather than longer term of an operating agreement to see if um, Mr. Ross or and the the club would come a little more into compliance. Um, is the feeling that a one-year, again, it says two years right now for the operating agreement. And one idea would be to make it consistent with the grooming agreement, which is an annual thing. I don't know, Heather, weigh in if you want, but I, I also wanted the commission to be able to give their reaction to a one-year versus two-year. Commissioner Freel.
Just simply because of the fact that there were several things we asked to be fixed and never were. And um, I think we had compliance issues throughout. I'd rather see it as a one-year, just to simply see if we can get through a year and things start going smoothly as opposed to what we have in the past. That's where I'm at with it.
I'm good with the one-year.
I'm good with the one-year, but I have a question. May have gone by me. Have we paid the guy any money yet?
Um, Heather. Uh, Michael, do you have any issues with, no, just wait, 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 with one-year? Um, because we're talking about instead of an operating agreement that's two-year, to move to a one-year just like the grooming.
No, I don't have any concerns with whatever term the commission decides on the operating agreement.
And, and I think you could tell Mr. Holsher that if, if we get back on the right track, then maybe it will make a lot of sense not to address this every year. I don't think we're looking for work. I think what we're doing is looking for stability and consistency and compliance. And the minute he gives us one or more of those things, we'll probably be willing to entertain a two-year or a three-year deal. But um, I think that'll be a, an important uh, um, conversation you can have with Mr. Holsher.
Okay.
Um, so then, Michael, um, yeah, either with respect to those three items or anything else in the grooming or operating agreement?
No, these highlighted items, I don't have an issue with that in the operating agreement. Um, my, my whole thought on this uh, biathlon club is um, at some point, I don't feel the county should be subsidizing, you know, via the grooming agreement. I mean, we don't, we don't provide any uh, funding to the Alcoa Marina, the Pathfinder Marina, the Boat Club, the Ski Club, other entities that utilize property managed or owned by the county. Um, so, you know, after five, six years of operation, I think they should be able to be on their own feet and operate. Um, and I don't know, like, I haven't seen their membership, so I don't know if there's a increase in membership over the last five years or a decrease to indicate um, the viability of the nonprofit to operate on county property. Um, so that's kind of where I'm coming from, because it, you know, if we pay them thirty thousand dollars for last year and thirty thousand again this year, which I believe last year before we increased that from twenty-five to thirty, my estimated calculations was about eighteen thousand five hundred dollars is what it cost to operate uh, the grooming over there. Uh, now, that was, that was just my opinion and my review, but uh, I just feel that at some point, they need to be able to stand on their own legs. And, and I don't know when that happens, but you know, if we're gonna pay them thirty from last year and thirty from this year, sixty thousand dollars goes a long ways. That's, that's not quite, that's about eight percent of my operating budget for the year. No, yes, yeah, about eight percent. Now, I have a six hundred and fifty thousand dollar budget to operate the mountain, so sixty thousand dollars goes a long ways to provide and improved entities for uh, areas where the, there's more public use than, than the biathlon club. And, and I'm not trying to be biased or vindictive. This is just what I see on paper and what, how it's operated.
I, I, I appreciate that and thank you. My um, my response is let's have the conversation again. Um, but I think that um, while your point's well taken, we are in November. Um, we have been on this path uh, for a while. I know that the twenty-five thousand dollars um, was changed the year that I came on, was appointed to the commission. I don't recall how long before that it was intact. I feel that it would be responsible to give all parties and the public enough heads up if we were to make a, a change. Um, but I do understand your point. Commissioner North?
Whoever gotten the information on their board, on his board, uh, or any of that other information that you requested a long time ago?
No.
So we haven't, so we haven't gotten a lot of the information that we've requested.
I got some of the board names, not all of the board names, so.
Okay, and?
You know, what I would like to know um, is who's actually gonna be overseeing operations on the ground this winter? Uh, main point of contact, um, who their operators are. Um, there were some additional discrepancies in the invoices from last year that I came across, so I know we have affidavits that say they're legit, so that's all I can.
And when you said, say additional discrepancies, I saw the, the memo or email from you. Are you talking about some in addition?
No, those with the, you know, incorrect years and, and things like that. And, you know, um, Ms., is it Mr. Harbison?
Yeah.
Stated he groomed last year, but I did not see his name listed as any of the grooming times. Um, you know, where it says Mr. Rosser grooms, and if it's not him, then it's noted, it's marked on the, on the times as to who else does it, so.
Well, Michael, I, I think that, I mean, I was gonna assign this to Heather to ask Pat about who the operators are and who the onsite manager supervises, but that stuff's more operational than you, you need to reach out uh, to, to Rob or Jack Harbison and maybe CC Heather. Um, so that you get that, because that, that operational information is important.
And in the past, um, the club has provided, you know, a request for a grooming agreement or provided a draft grooming agreement to get started. Um, I have not seen that. I did not see that last season. I've yet to see that now, so I don't know if uh, legal has seen a draft grooming agreement at this time or not.
Well, it's the one that you commented on. I think you, you added a, a something to the exhibit B. I think that's the current draft we're, we're working on. So, so there is one.
And did that, was that provided by the club or was that just us re- review?
I, I think, I can't remember. One, one or both of us just kind of pulled up an old agreement and tweaked it.
Yeah, that, that one has gotten back on the radar between mostly, I think, because of the efforts of council. Um, and so I think there is an intention on the club's part to have a grooming agreement, whereas last year, I think it just their mind.
Operationally from parks, I would love to have a, you know, clear and concise relationship with them, because uh, park staff cannot groom that. We don't have the, the manpower to um, take care of our Nordic system as well as that over there um, at the same time.
Yeah, and, and you know, there, because of the peculiar contract between T Cross T Ranch from twenty fifteen, the ground lease agreement, there, there are legal considerations in, in this. And so we want to be mindful of those and kind of the big picture as well.
Mr. Chairman.
Yeah, Commissioner Laird.
Uh, I needed a good point of information. What, what was the reason that we have him doing grooming rather than uh, the county?
Um, from what I recall historically, it was um, because the county could not uh, attend to it on a regular basis. Um, I think that's.
Has that changed? Can you attend to it on a?
The county, um, we groomed for Nationals in twenty-three, but other than that, uh, the county doesn't groom over there. We don't have the staff um, to be over there as well as take care of everything that we have, so.
So this guy that's, that's involved, we, that we haven't paid is the one who's doing it, and now the issue is finally, how do we pay him?
Well, the issue about last year is we were never approached for a grooming agreement, and we've yet to see one now, so the operating agreement's been well over a year since it expired.
Well, he did work though, didn't he?
Uh, to my understanding, from what I've seen in the documentation, yeah, they did work.
So I think the law is somewhat clear on that.
I'll leave that to you guys.
Title to be paid, and I, I don't know why we keep stringing this along.
Well, whether or not we.
Especially if we need him to keep grooming.
So let's shift. I think that's a, a transition to the dollars involved. Attorneys can argue all day long about, I did the work, I should get paid. This is the amount it was last year. But, but this does have an hourly component in it, and it does have uh, a dollar per hour component, and it does or did have a, some sort of audit verification. Whether it's meters, whether it's, and, and I feel really comfortable with not having paid anything as of now. They, they provided the information though to us. We have maybe some issues and some uncertainties with regard to, well, how much did it snow and how much effort was necessary or reasonable for that period of time. Um, I don't, I've litigated enough of these cases to know that the, the attorneys come out just fine. And the parties typically are wondering by the end of it, what am I doing here? So my feeling is now that we have this information, we have an affidavit, we have sworn testimony from Mr. Rosser. Um, that, that the commission needs to make a decision, and the decision can be to pay nothing and see what happens. Or it can be to pay the full bill, the full thirty thousand dollars and never worry about twenty-twenty-three again. Uh, or we can make some sort of offer um, and say, look, we have some issues or some concerns, but we don't want to fight about it, but we give you twenty-five thousand dollars or twenty-seven, five today, low, low price, take it. Uh, and if you accept it within five days or a week or whatever, we're done. Um, I, I don't know if the commission wants to go through that negotiation, and obviously some of this can be um, discussion with council in an executive session if we'd like, but I'm just saying, those are kind of the options that I see, Commissioner Laird. I, I think that we're justified in not having paid up to this point, but now we have all this information. I, I think that we're justified in not having paid up to this point, but now we have all this information and I don't want to have another meeting on it unless we really have to.
What do you suggest, Mr. Chairman, in terms of getting this matter settled?
I, I'd like to, I'd like to make an offer after consultation with you all, um, and our council. Um, and maybe Michael attends. I think it's more of a, um, a principal discussion and decision.
Um, Mr. Chairman?
Yeah, Commissioner North.
If we do make an offer with that consideration, I want to make sure that we have language in there that says that we're not, this is not contingent on any future contract or any obligation from the county to pay. So that if we choose not to maintain that, that we are not obligated in the future. And upon accepting payment, that we are not obligated to pay any additional fees unless we have a contract and everything in that contract is held to the letter of the law. All the i's are dotted and all the t's are crossed. You know, part of the problem that we had was he was supposed to have given us and submitted invoices on a monthly basis. He didn't do that. He was supposed to have submitted hourly, hour meter readings, and that didn't happen. He said that, you know, and he came up with all kinds of excuses. One, he didn't replace the hour meter on his machine, um, so.
Commissioner North, I'm, I'm interrupting, sorry.
I, well, I just think that that's something that we, you know, if that's the direction we go, I'm not saying one way or another. I'm just saying that these are things that need to be very specific and, and itemized and lined out before we agree to do anything.
Chairman, it's paid, we get a release. That ends it right there.
There'd be a mutual release, um, but I think Commissioner North is also, um, saying not only was there non-compliance with the terms of the, the contract, or there wasn't a contract that year.
There was no contract for last.
Right, there was no grooming agreement. So then there was an assumption that it would be the same, kind of carried over. Um, you know, but, but I think your, your point is also, we need to have, um, a clear understanding that it might not look like thirty thousand dollars at two hun- because there was a specific reason. We bumped the hours. Rob came and talked to us. We bumped the hours up and we bumped the hourly rate up, didn't we? I know we did with respect to the hours.
Mr. Chairman, we bumped the rate. We did not change that amount of hours.
Hourly rate went from one twenty-five to one fifty, and, um, but, you know, there was.
But, but I think that if we've got an annual grooming agreement, then by definition, those are the terms. And if we get to the next year and we feel like those, we need to add more hours or more dollars or less, subtract, then, then we can do that. So I think that's just, yes, Commissioner Mill.
So, fine, looking back or whatever, I'm, I'm, I'm with you. I'm, I'm just full of this. I think if we want to maintain this relationship, however, there needs to be some clear understanding from their part that if we don't get the required, uh, documentation, if we don't get the required billing as we have told them, and this is, needs to all be stipulated in the contract, that they will not be paid moving forward. They either do what we ask, as a contractor would for any customer, or it will affect their payment. Here in simple, it's, this, this has been going on for years and it's ridiculous. But look at it as a contractor, operator, contractor, customer relationship. Have that contract written out as such. They don't fulfill their obligations, they don't get paid.
And, Mr. Chairman, if I could speak on it.
Just a minute. Let me, let me say something in addition to what, uh, Mr. Millen said. I agree with what he said and what, the way you solve that, as you know, Mr. Chairman, is that in the contract, you have a statement that is, if the contract isn't signed, there is no deal. Now here, apparently somebody knew he didn't sign a contract or how far through the drain did this thing fall? And if he had no written contract and somebody knew it, like Mr. Brown knew it, why is he letting him do the work up there? So here's what I'd like to do. I'd like to solve this problem. And then to meet what Mr. Milner said and what Mr. North has said, and actually what Mr. Brown has said, you have a clause. If there ain't no signature, there ain't no deal. If it ain't in writing, it don't count. But we've let the guy work and we took advantage of the work. He ran the, he ran the biathlon. They had it. People showed up. Was a good thing for Natrona County. We know he's owed money. And I think we have, our integrity is on the line to some extent, that we get this matter taken care of. And I'd like to see it taken care of forthwith. That's the old word my port professor used to use.
So based on payment in the twenty-two, twenty-three grooming agreement, um, the county did pay under protest at one time. I don't know if, was that with you or previous?
It was, it was previous to me.
Previous to you. Uh, there was a payment under protest due to, um, improper reporting, late invoices. I don't recall. Anyways, um, my other question is, is, uh, I did not budget to pay for a grooming contract in the mountain budget this year. Um, so I will be a little concerned if that has to come out of the mountain budget or if, um, any payment passed or future through this fiscal year, where that money's gonna come from. If it impacts my budget, things are gonna be really, really tight. Let's put it that way.
Well, that's part of the reason why we never came to an agreement last year. We didn't have anything signed.
It was never requested last year?
No, it was never requested, so.
You guys are driving me crazy. We accepted the work and to keep going over this over and over and over, I've heard all this. We need to get this matter settled, which I think Mr. Nicolason is correct. Our attorney can get with his attorney. They can get a number and get this matter settled. But if you didn't put it in your budget and you're counting on him, you know he's doing it, because you're not doing it. Somebody's doing it.
Commissioner Laird.
It, it's just got too much loose ends here.
Commissioner Laird.
Have happened on everybody's part.
So our grooming agreement is for a specific set of months. Biathlon club typically grooms early and late, clearing the May. Uh, the grooming agreement typically ends April first, so I was not counting on them doing the grooming. Uh, I didn't have discussions with them. They didn't tell me they were doing it. Uh, it's always last minute that they report anything that they need.
But you didn't do the grooming.
No, you are correct.
And you knew it was getting done. So let, let's get over this problem.
Okay.
Let's get this man paid something that's agreeable to everybody and move on and get this thing taken care of with an appropriate legal agreement that's, uh, solid. It's not an easy, hard thing to do. Mr. Nicolason's been doing it for twenty years. He knows what he's doing there. I've done a few of them myself, but if you don't have an agreement, you don't have anything other than you, here we are, wasting time at a meeting over the same thing. I've heard this, I don't know how many times. Let's get it settled.
So at this point, this falls on the commission to decide if you're gonna pay him or not and how much. That does not, I don't have any say in that, whether you guys paying it. I don't have the money.
Commissioner Laird, if I could just waste one more moment on this and, and, no, I want your opinion on this. So you put it back on to basically Mr. Brown saying that this guy's out there doing work and he knows it, and so he owes it to him. Where's the responsibility on, on the groomer themselves or the person running the biathlon? When they know full well they haven't signed a contract, they're out there doing the work, knowing there's no contract in place. Where's their responsibility?
Well, it isn't the first time that this has ever happened anywhere on the planet. This kind of thing has happened. There's, there's cases about this kind of thing happening. And so my point is, we're a responsible organization with some amount of integrity. We know the work was done. The biathlon came off. People enjoyed it. People came to the city, spent money here. So to continually even harass that guy or harass Mr. Brown or us, the matter needs to be settled. And not just, not just constantly thrown through the washing machine.
Commissioner Laird, it, it does need to be settled, but there needs to be some responsibility on behalf of, of them. And we've gone over this since I've been on this commission for two years. We have gone back and forth with them, asking for information that never gets provided.
As it been now though?
Now, now you.
It's, it's still defective in some respects.
There was some information, I know, I noticed it happen.
I just don't feel that this commission or Mr. Brown needs to take the responsibility solely on, on our backs to say that we're the ones in the wrong. He is in the wrong by not, by not having a contract in place and by not following the rules that were put forth. A year ago, I, I disagreed with moving forward with him because of the fact that we've had these issues and it's continued for this last year. So all I'm saying is,
I hear what you're saying.
If a contract wasn't in place, it is not this board's responsibility solely.
So here's my, here's my response.
Keep some of it.
We have a lawyer. He has a lawyer. We give her authority. I see this in every case I'm ever in. I hear from the defense that my guy caused the wreck and my guy says that guy caused the wreck and somebody else, the cop says somebody else caused the wreck. We don't sit around and haggle all of that for two years. We say, here's what we're willing to do. We put up our money and we get rid of the case. That's it. That's all, that's all I'm advocating.
Commissioner, um, let me, let me tell you, Commissioner Laird, that we share the frustration. Um, but, but I think we do have to recognize that, um, that, that we've been asking for, I think, reasonable information and documentation for a long, long time. And I would say the majority of the delay is not on the part of this county. I think it's on the part of, uh, the Casper Mountain Biathlon Club. Now, let's not, let's not litigate that. Let's try to get this resolved. Um, I, I might have another change or two for you, counsel. Um, I'll get with you. Has he done, has there been grooming that's occurred?
So when I was up there, it did not appear so, but I did receive a report from somebody that they did groom during the last storm halfway through, and that's why it didn't look like it'd been roll packed at all. Uh, so they did spend a few hours, I think, roll packing it during a storm, but the additional six inches on top indicated that it had been done.
Heather, you need to clarify with Mr. Holsher what work has been done and documented, because we don't have a contract. According to this agreement, we only have to pay for work done during the term of the agreement. So I don't want to have two hours that people are gonna come back and say, well, and then other people say, well, we didn't have an agreement. So let's get that squared away too. And if we need to add those hours or acknowledge those hours would be part of this, this grooming agreement, then fine, but, but we need to address that. Commissioner Mill?
Mr. Chairman, uh, Heather, everybody, I don't know if this is an option or not. Can we send them a letter or notification that, um, to your point, to your, uh, statement just now that they've already been grooming this year, this season's year? That they will not be paid for any groom, further grooming until we have a signed agreement?
I mean, I think we can specify that, but we need to, you know, my hope in, um, sending the, the drafts again was to kind of spur the discussion so that we can.
I think that would really spur it.
Get this resolved.
Well, one thing we can't do as a matter of law is allow work to be done and not say anything about it.
That's what I'm saying.
So, so that's why I'm saying we need to address this last incident and, incident, this last grooming. And then whatever grooming may occur, uh, before we ink this thing. Um, or we can retroactively date it to maybe November first, but currently it says October.
It does.
So let's make sure not to overlook that. Um, I think that, uh, we ought to spend no more than five minutes during the executive session to obtain legal advice and maybe, um, just understand clear, more clearly the risks and benefits of either not paying or paying in full or paying partially. And then we need to give you, uh, a number to propose. Commissioner Laird, your light's on, but I want to give.
I do have something I want to say.
If you would.
Okay, so, now this is disturbing, uh, Mr. Freel, that he's been doing grooming now in light of this problem that's occurred two years ago, and we haven't done anything. We have some duty to say, don't be doing grooming up on our mountain until you've signed the agreement. But now, Michael knows he's up there. Somebody's doing grooming and we go ahead and take it. So, yeah, we have a problem. We need to, we need to do exactly what Mr. Nicolason said, is put this in the hands of our county attorney and come to a settlement agreement. Holsher's a reasonable person. He can read the law. He understands what it means, either have a written agreement or not a written agreement. Jim is right. You can't touch one of our bushes again unless you have a written agreement. That ends the problem. But to now hear that, just now for the first time, that he's done some more grooming in light of all this, it's almost insanity in my opinion, and somebody isn't getting their job done. I don't know who it is. Maybe it's us. But I think it's been stated that you don't do, you don't do one thing and you get a letter, don't do one thing again until there's a signed written agreement. And then we figure out what has the man really done and pay him his money.
Mr. Holsher is in trial today in a ca- case involving the city of Casper, and so if he's, they, they were talking, um, the city indicated that that case was probably gonna be done today, so hopefully you can get in touch with Mr. Holsher later this week. Commissioner Freel briefly?
The only comment I want to make, Mr. Chair, is that I get it that if somebody does work, that, that you gotta pay him. But at the same time, the person doing the work, if they know they don't have a signed contract in place, they should not be out there doing the work, period. So it's not, doesn't all fall back onto our lap, because all I've heard probably for the last two years is if it's not in writing, it doesn't matter. If it's not in writing, if it's not signed and you don't have a contract in place, they take some responsibility on themselves to go out there and be doing this grooming and doing the work on their own, knowing full well that they have not reached a written agreement between the county and themselves. That's the point that I'm trying to make. It's not all back on us.
And I, I agree with that.
All right, Mr. Brown, last comment.
Okay, so the typical grooming agreement we've had in the past starts November first through April first. The grooming that I just addressed was in the month of October. The biathlon club grooms early season, late season afterwards, and we do not pay them for grooming in October or April or May. That's on their own accord to do that. Um, so technically this
Good, good.
is not under the grooming.
Thank you for, for reminding us, but we, Heather, you will still clarify with Pat Holsher then that we're aware that some grooming may have occurred. It's outside the typical term, uh, seasonal grooming term that begins historically November first. And just so you're clear, Mr. Holsher, the county, um, doesn't intend to pay for that work. And I don't know, it kind of depends on whether or not you, um, threaten that we're not gonna pay anything moving forward. I mean, my, my hope would be that we can get this done and signed by the time of the next meeting. Um, but if Mr. Holsher isn't responding and if, and if you're too busy or, you know, whatever happens and we don't, then by gosh, we really do need to clarify and say, either stop the grooming or don't do the grooming or you do so at your peril and, and at your cost, or we need to figure it out. But, but the longer we delay that resolution, the, the more risk I think there is for us, so.
One, one last.
Briefly.
So the grooming agreement, it's my understanding that the operating agreement has to be in place because the grooming agreement's basically a subcontract of the operating agreement. And maybe Legal can attest to that or, or advise that. I'm not a lawyer, but that's my understanding of how these agreements work. That operating agreement has to be in place for a grooming, agreement to be there, unless we reword the grooming agreement.
My expectation is that we do both agreements at the same time and we make an offer ASAP on last year's. Um, I was, I, I was a little surprised when you said, I think you said that this year's thirty thousand dollars is not in your budget. Last, I know that last year's is for last year's, if it even was in there, so I, I'm looking at these separately. Um, whatever agreement we come to for the twenty-three, twenty-four season, um, I think may come out of one pot. I don't know about this, this current, um, grooming twenty-four, twenty-five. I don't know about this, this current, um, grooming 24, 25, because it seems to me that maybe that should have been in your budget. But maybe we can cross that bridge when we get to it, unless somebody else has any other comment. Mr. Brown, thank you very much. I think we all want the same thing, which is to have compliance with this and to move on. All right. Uh, so legal updates, um, other legal updates, either from Heather or for Heather?
Don't have anything else, Mr. Chairman, at this time.
Okay. Think that my other items for you were executive session, legal advice, or pending litigation. So let's move to Commissioner Roundtable, Commissioner, any, me, my Laird.
So just to dovetail something. I had a guy work for me for 25 years and he passed away recently. And we knew he was, he's 87 years old. And his stepson came over and did all, did my yard. Went in and cleaned up all the leaves and cut down branches and everything. And, uh, he gave me a bill and it was just for mowing the lawn. So I said, well, you, you hauled away all of these leaves and raked twice or three times and did all this work. I know, I saw you doing it. And I really appreciated it. He says, well, I didn't know what to charge you. And I said, well, I'm going to pay you what I paid your dad unless you think it should be amended. And I appreciated that he did it. I didn't have any agreement with him. He wanted to make sure he did it for me because I needed somebody to do it. And so I just think that in Wyoming and many other places, there are certain people that go do work and think they'll get paid because they're doing the work and they've always done the work and they know that, they, they know the work needs to be done. Now, here we are in a situation where as the county commissioners, we need to look at the justice of the matter. We have integrity here. We're people of our word. And yes, you can, you can beat up on certain people who aren't lawyers, who can't aff- afford to hire lawyers and wouldn't even think of hiring one. They just think if I do the job, I'm going to get paid. They've always paid me. And, uh, whether they have an issue with somebody or not with somebody, um, no one's perfect. Everybody makes mistakes. And we've all made them. And we look back and, and, and in my business, uh, people ma- make a lot of big mistakes. Somebody's always pointing a finger, but every time you point a finger, somebody got four fingers pointing back at you. And so I see that all the time. And what we do is we try to take a look at it, get it settled, not get into the facts, not get everybody all irritated. Figure out what it's worth to us, what it was worth to do the work, offer the money. And knowing Holsher, he, he knows what the law is. He's not an idiot. He's, he doesn't want to take a case where he gets all the money and the guy didn't get anything. And I don't want to see that happen to the guy either. Cause I understand he's, he lives a very, um, he lives a lifestyle that isn't, uh, overwhelming. And so there's just certain things after a while that you would think that five men on a commission who have been in business and understand rules and regulations, and here all this stuff has been said, finally gets something settled. And I think that's on its way and I'm happy about that. And so, uh, I always appreciate the discussion, but I think integrity is a very important matter for all of us to observe and remind ourselves of and do the right thing.
Commissioner North.
I just want to give a, uh, a shout out to the snow gypsies they worked with, uh, Park's Department. They red- redid the roof at their own expense on the powder house up on the mountain, um, that meets requirements, uh, full code and everything else. And they took care of that on their own initiative. And, you know, and I think that's, unfortunately, we have a lot of, a lot of groups that do a lot of stuff for the county and we don't give them nearly enough credit. And I do think that that's something that we need to make sure that we do is to give them the credit where credit's due. And they raised the money. They bought all the materials and they work with several of our different, um, vendors around town that gave them a break on a lot of that stuff, but they did it, you know, they did it and got it taken care of. And I just want to, just want to say I appreciate that.
Thanks, thanks for bringing that up. I think it is good to, uh, do a shout out. Um, I have, I have one, two here in a minute.
Yeah, I, I do have one more. Since we're talking about shout outs, this, this one's, this one's-
Steal my thunder.
No, this is simple too. And that's, that's the state trails system going in and, and taking care of Ponterosa Park and the trails down there. That's something that, uh, you know, there's a lot of people that were upset because they, they had to cut out a few of the trees, but that area has been overgrown as a result of the sheep herder fire. And I can personally say that it was pretty tight, even with a small four wheel drive to get through there in the past. And now, um, went up there a few weeks ago before the snow. I don't think I would have tried it during the snow. But after the snow and it's, the road's a whole lot better. You can make it all the way around in two wheel drive now, or at least you could at that point in time. And, uh, it's going to make it a whole lot safer for the snowmobilers, uh, the skiers and everybody else back there in that, that area as far as the hazards go. So.
Commissioner Freel.
So just respond back to you, Commissioner Laird. In the story that you just told, obviously the, the sun came over and mowed your lawn and took care of things. And you did exactly what you said. You, you did the right thing. And that's what should be done is do the right thing. But that didn't involve a contract. He did that because he knew you needed it done. This is different in the respect that you have somebody that has a contract, should be working under a contract and he knows it. The whole point I've been making today is not that we should not do the right thing. We should resolve this. But what I'm saying is you cannot throw it all back on to the county's back. You can't put it back on Mr. Brown's back. There is some responsibility by the Biathlon Club and by Mr. Rossar to make sure that he has proper paperwork signed, written in place. If it's not written, it didn't happen. You've said that for two years now. And so that's been my whole point today. We do need to do the right thing. We do need to resolve it, but at the same time, it's not all our responsibility back on him also. The only other thing I wanted to say, I put an email out yesterday, I believe it was, about the J Foundation. We had a group in here talking about suicide. We've been talking about how we help the community, help the, the youth of the community as far as suicide goes, uh, suicide prevention goes. Um, the J Foundation is in town this week. If you guys aren't familiar with them, I'll, I'll let you attend and listen to the, to the full story, but they're out of Pinedale. And the, the thing with the J Foundation is it's not just a talk that where they sit down and talk about suicide prevention. It's a talk and then about halfway through it, they've partnered with Boot Barn and they give you a set of boots. And that set of boots basically is a, uh, you do a boot check. When, when you have somebody that you know is down, you do a boot check and make sure that, that they're okay and they're taken care of. The thing about this foundation is when you leave, you leave with something tangible that you're going to put on your feet and you're going to remember that talk that you had. And I, I think that they're doing great things, not just in this community, they're doing it all over. Tomorrow night, I, I did say it was at NC, but tomorrow night at Boot Barn at 6:30, it is open to the public. And they are, um, so you've been invited to go and attend, uh, to go listen to what they have to say. And I, and I would tell you to go. I went through it last Monday and I went through the whole process with them and, and it's an amazing group and they, and they're doing amazing things. So I would tell you tomorrow night, if you have time, and I hope you would, 6:30 tomorrow night at Boot Barn. Just, I'm going to go back and listen to it again myself. Uh, so I would ask that you just show up and, and, and go through the process.
So it's not four o'clock?
It is not four o'clock. Originally it was, they were going to put, put it in with the students at NC, but they have created another time simply for, um, mi- members of the council, members of the commission, members of, uh, the community. So 6:30 tomorrow night, Boot Barn.
How long it takes?
An hour. Actually, I'll tell you, it takes about 90 minutes to.
So thank you, Commissioner Freel. I will be attending that and, um, hopefully most of the rest of us can as well. Did you have anything else? Okay. Commissioner Mill.
Yeah, not. I'm in agreement with, uh, Commissioner Freel. Uh, Commissioner Laird, you did the right thing with that kid. I'm, I'm glad you did. I think one of the biggest point differences, however, besides the contract, as he pointed out, is the habitual behavior, behavior behind it. The, the Biathlon has consistently habitually not paid attention to our requests, to the agreement. They've done what they've wanted and they get paid for it later down the road. And that's, that's, that's the biggest problem. And that's why I'm saying we need to have clear concise language in that, uh, contract that, you know, you start violating this again. We're not, we're done playing this game. It, it, it's been multiple commissions through the years that have, have had to deal with this over and over and over. It just needs to be put to an end at this point. But I'm in agreement. What they, what they do is good. I appreciate what they're doing, but they've got to play by the rules, just like everybody else does. It just seems like they're, they are consistently taking advantage of the county. The, I heard that the DOT has completed that, uh, study over there at Robertson Road and, uh, the bypass and has determined potentially that there is no problem. I haven't heard or seen that study myself. I'd love it if, if we could get those guys back in here to give us a, at some point when we have time and space, but, uh, get them back in here to give us a briefing on what they found out concerning-
Give me a little more background.
The Robertson bypass, uh, intersection that's killed so many people.
Oh, okay. The intersection.
Yeah. They, they said they'd do the study and it sounds like they did. I'd like to know what their findings are and how they came to, to whatever they determined.
Would you be willing to reach out to the district engineer, Mark A. and, and, and get some additional information? And then if they want to come, great. If they have a study they want to provide, if they have some options or a plan. But, but one of us ought to make the first call.
First move, yeah.
And I would, or we could ask Heather to, but it seems that if you have a little info on it already and-
Well, and I'm the one that asked him to do the study, so.
You're kind of on it. So you'd do that. That'd be great. Yeah, Mark A. and it'd be, he's the boss over there.
Yep.
Good, good.
That's all I got.
Um, Commissioner Laird, I know you mean well. But I felt you were lecturing the four of us or the commission maybe in general, um, with respect to the Biathlon Club. And, and I'm going to give grace in the sense that that first nine months when Commissioner North, Commissioner Mill, and I kind of were working through this and we heard from Mr. Rossar and we went over the expectations that the county had. And I mean, we, we have, I feel, gone above and beyond. And, and I don't know. I, I kind of think that he's just one of those guys that doesn't focus on the details. He, he gets stuff done and, but, but maybe paperwork's hard for him or whatever. But, but we, I feel, have been exceedingly patient and have tried to work with them. And there have been enough yellow and red flags that he has been an active participant in us being where we're at today. And, and I think we're all, you know, the five of us are pretty much in, in concert with kind of ultimately where we're going to go with this. But, you know, we all have our perspectives. And I just say that the, there's another perspective here, which is just utter frustration in the headaches that Mr. Brown has had, but also our legal department and also all the promises that were made to us. So I, I get your point and I want to be a good neighbor and I want to, I, we have integrity and we, we have it. But, but this is, there's a reason why we're here and it, and it ain't just the county. Um.
So let me make one statement.
Well, it's kind of, I guess it is round table. If it were commissioner comments, I'd say no, but keep it brief because I have a number of things I want to get into.
I keep it as brief as you do. My point is, is I didn't, I, I apologize to anybody who thinks I was lecturing them. My frustration really is that the matter hasn't been settled up to now. I get in these things all the time. The lawyers go back and forth all the time. And finally we say, uh, let's have a mediation. And we go have a mediation. And everybody says what they want to say. And there's a mediator and he goes back and forth and he walks out. We got the case settled for hundreds of thousands of dollars, sometimes millions of dollars. Now, in this case, why not do that? You could have Heather go over there with, uh, we've done that with Lita one other time with some lady where we're trying to settle something and we paid them some money over a, because we illegally took their land for taxes and it was a, it was a-
We, we have a plan for this one.
So my point is, is it'd be nice to get it done, Mr. Chairman.
I agree completely.
That's where I'm really frustrated.
And, and I, I, I share your frustration. Um, with regard, I guess I have a couple of other items in no particular order. We received from comment, no comet, changing our mental and emotional trajectory. There's a training at the Ag Resource Center, um, November 13th and November 14th. Donna Hoffman sent us something and it's again, um, trying to, uh, be more proficient, better, I get, I guess, maybe a better friend, but better able to deal with, um, mental and emotional health. So take a look at that, November 13th and 14th. It looks like there are two different training sessions. Maybe one or more of us can go to that. Um, Michelle, uh, we had Brian Oliver and the fire department tender from the Anna Klein Impact Funds. Brian Oliver sent an email, a final invoice came in. I know that Tracy has been up to her years in election stuff, $326,000 invoice. Brian Oliver said that he has made temporary arrangements for payments of it. What, what needs to be done? Does Mr. Oliver need to submit something? Good. As long as it's in process and on somebody's desk, I, I didn't want to, um, not have that dealt with in as timely a fashion as we can. But, but next week or the week after is fine. Okay. Well, we'll leave it in your, uh, good hands to, uh, I meant collectively, not just you. No, um, you know, so that we can address both. No. Um, you know, so that we can address both this tender, but then also the impact assistant funds maybe more, more broadly.
Yeah.
Great. Yeah.
Um, yeah, Michelle, Peter, whoever, uh, the entities that are being awarded the money. They're where we need to get the money before they start purchasing things or, or how, how is this working?
Well, I think the lead time was one of the huge issues on this.
Right. And the only reason we're doing it with the fire department at this time was the lead time, like you're saying for that truck.
Well, and we may have had the whole funding.
Right. And that's what I'm saying is to, in order to capture that truck at that price and the lead time, he needed to do it now instead of just shooting from the hip.
Yeah.
Or wait until all the money's in.
And then they showed up with the truck.
Right.
And they said, you gotta, you gotta pay it. And I'm like, okay.
And that's the biggest problem with so many of these things that we're asking our different county entities, the different cities and everything else, that they're predict, projecting something out. And then the industrial siding may not start providing that money when we're, when they're, it's a, they want that number right now. And it doesn't account for any interest. It doesn't account for any change in pricing or anything else. And then when it comes down, trying to get that additional funding is ridiculous. And I've actually asked, uh, Bill Landon to work on something to change some of those rules as far as the industrial siding goes so that it is a little bit more consistent and easier for our groups. Because it's like, if you have a, if you have a fire truck, you may order it. It may be a year, it may be two years out from the time you order it. Well, if you have to wait until they have that funding in hand to order it, then.
You're always going to be paying ketchup because it costs a hundred bucks.
Or, or three hundred thousand dollars more, five hundred thousand dollars more. And so it's a problem. And I, I understand that, you know, there's ways that you can ask for that additional money from the state, but it's still, it doesn't take care of that, that issue, you know, that some of this stuff, we, when it starts, you may start having those calls associated way up front before the real major construction starts. If you, you're going to, you start the sheriff department, the fire department, having people that are coming in.
And that's kind of where my point was going to is, is we really need to make sure we're working with the agencies or entities and let them know that, you know, yeah, sometimes you do have to order in early, but man, you know, we just can't come and throw money at, order stuff if we don't have the money. And not to count on that money until it's actually in our plot.
Well, and that's, that's what I'm asking the state to do is to change those. I'm asking them to see if we can change some of those rules so that we do have some of that right up front.
But we're dealing with what we have right now.
No, no, I, yeah, this is not something that's going to help right now, but it, it, it will affect everybody that gets that industrial siding money down the road. Um, because it's, it's tough, you know, and that, that's always been a, a challenge because you just never know.
Anyway, thank you.
Yeah. And it's, it's a good discussion and thanks for, um, your question, uh, Commissioner Mellon, and thanks for working with Senator Landon, Commissioner North. Um, it's, it's not a perfect system by any stretch. The industrial siding, um, division, council, uh, you know, developer may apply for a section 109 permit and get it and then sit on the permit for a long time. And so the, there can be significant delays that are beyond the state's control, much less ours. In any event, um, a couple of other things. Sonny Pilcher, uh, advised me on October twenty ninth that he is putting the equipment in to the racks or whatever it's going to be called for, um, Logan and Jim Kaufman. He said he's not going to work there. Um, that's what I know. The Platte River Commons. Uh, there's about seventy acres um, of undeveloped ground. I met with the city of Casper yesterday. They have sent out a, a request for proposal. They've been working with the Amoco, um, reuse joint powers board. And there's going to be a consultant hopefully hired, uh, and the price of that consultant master plan for the development of the forty to seventy acres. With a focus on recreational, uh, activities, um, would, uh, hopefully get some progress, um, on, on that, that long stall development. So the Platte River Commons, it's basically the stuff along the river out there, um, near Three Crowns. So it goes on both sides of the, um, Wyoming Odile Arangology, um, building. And the ask is going to be that the county participates at the tune of eight thousand dollars. Uh, the way that the city proposes that it be broken down is that, uh, multiple, um, organizations and entities and jurisdictions have some skin in the game. So there's kind of an eight thousand dollar level and I, there are basically four entities that would be proposed to be at that level, plus or minus four entities. So the city of Casper puts in eight thousand. This is toward the fifty-five thousand dollars. Um, the county, I can't remember if Amoco Reuse Joint Powers Board is also at that level. Um, there's, there's the fast pitch softball group and a couple of others that are at a lower level, which is at like two thousand or twenty-five hundred. In any event, um, this is kind of an FYI, uh, but I think either later this month or early December, um, I'm going to ask the commission to, um, participate through funding that eight thousand dollars, at that eight thousand dollar level, uh, for this, um, not to exceed fifty-five thousand dollar, uh, study for the development. Um, are there preliminary questions or feedback on that? The next thing on my list was, the, I, I had Michelle draft a letter from me to the Wyoming County Commissioners Association with respect to the five thousand dollars for, um, assistance on litigation costs. Um, we had that back on our, um, work session and then I think we had it on our, uh, consent agenda on October first. I don't know if any of you want to see the letter. It's like a two sentence letter. Um, that's basically says, here's the check to help defray litigation costs in the Teton County State Wyoming Appeal currently pending before the line stream court. Thanks to you and the WCCA for your good work in this important effort related to local government control.
That, that argument's going to be held here in a few days, isn't it?
No, 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 no. Um, that argument is set for January twelfth or fourteenth. Yep. Um, Donna Cheyanne. So I will go ahead and sign that and get that shipped out. Uh, Commissioner Laird, you asked, um, what, what are the costs? I said, um, I didn't know. Um, and there are going to be some additional costs when it comes around time for, for argument. Um, WCC informed me this week that they're at fifteen thousand dollars right now, which is pretty much where I thought they would be. So that's the current, uh, legal bill. Um, their attorneys whom I can't remember the name of.
Do you know what our legal bill is from our hearing the other day? What's the?
Yeah, you may have signed the approval.
I didn't see it. I didn't see it.
It's eight thousand.
Is that all he charges? Eight thousand?
That's, that's what this bill is. I don't, can't answer.
I saw eighty-eight hundred, but I didn't, I didn't pay any attention to who, who, who was from.
Um, the next thing on my list.
Guys get to be seventy-eight years old. I won't be here. Just remember a couple of times when he smiled at me.
Um, the, uh, on, there's an October fourteenth letter from Visit Casper. Um, there was the NCJAA, um, tournament. And, and there were two items with that. And I kind of wanted just everybody to weigh in on where the heck we left that. There, there was a direct ask, as I recall, of ten thousand dollars. I thought we approved that. I'm seeing some heads nodding. Okay. And then I don't know if they made a formal request on the other item or if they were going to come back to that, back to us on that. Anybody remember? Remember there was the Visit Casper sponsorship of the NCJAA? Proud to Host the Best. Well, that's the one that we've, we've been doing for a number of years and, and that, that was ten thou- I thought that was ten too, but I'm not sure. Commissioner Field?
I don't remember the amounts. I can tell you on the NCJAA, that was a two-year contract, um, that was out there and it was ten thousand for both years. And I know that we had agreed to pay for that. Proud to Host the Best has been around. That's the high school tournaments that come here. And that's been around forever. And we've always, we've always picked that up from what I'm aware of, us and, and the city both.
Yeah. So I think, well, I, I can't remember. Michelle, can you look into that? But I think that what we're saying is that we as a commission approved both. Um, and they, at both the, the previous year's level. Is that Commissioner Frill?
I believe so. And, you know, for, you just look at the college one, ten thousand dollar investment, but the amount of people that are coming here and, and what's getting spent in the community, that's money well spent.
I agree.
Same with Proud to Host the Best. Look at how much, uh, we bring in from around the state for our high school tournaments and whatnot. And that's what it's there for. Uh, there's other towns out there that are, are chomping at the bit to start to whittle away at some of these competitions and I think they're best served here instead of people traveling clear across from kitty corner to kitty corner to go to the tournaments. And we've got the hotels and we've got the facilities. Um, we should be encouraging people to get, come here.
Mr. Chairman, do we have an agreement? Do we sign a written agreement with those folks that we donate money to?
Um, I think what we typically see with these kinds of things is a letter, um, and then we have a presentation. Um, and that there isn't an agreement, written agreement per se.
So I, I asked that question just because maybe the issue would be with us and the county and being taxpayer money. We do have a written memo where, where it states what we're going to give them and they sign it and we sign it and we know. So that we're not sitting here trying to remember something. It's just a, it's just a something maybe that should be a protocol for the county.
Well, Michelle and I were looking at paperwork.
Um, twenty-three, twenty-four sponsorship for Proud to Host the Best was twenty-five thousand.
Okay. And, and so Commissioner Laird, I hear what you're saying. I think, um, typically there is, like I said, at least a letter of request and a presentation. Um, and then like I did on this WCCA thing, we memorialize it with, with a letter from the chair going out. Um, I think that when it's a, um, more of a contractual agreement where in which we pay something and we're supposed to get something tangible like grooming. Um, I think that it's, it's critical that, that that be reduced to writing so that everybody and our successors and people down the road know what the deal is. On these sponsorships, um, I, I don't want to create more complexity than, than we need where we can, um, you know, kind of do what the, the practice is and where, what they're doing is just saying, maybe it's a sponsorship, but, but we're really not getting back tangible benefits.
Mr. Chair, I, actually I do believe there is a letter that gets signed by each and the entities because of the fact that they do ask like city of Casper, county of Natrona to put in and they want signatures at the bottom of the paper to know that they have buy-in and that the funds will be there. I think there is.
I know the city does it.
Yeah.
I mentioned it here. I don't know.
I'm pretty sure there is a form that, that they have each of the entities sign off on, from what I recall in my time of dealing with it.
Okay. Thank you very much. We appreciate your, your knowledge, institutional knowledge. Um, I guess what we're saying is, where's the paperwork then? And, um, Michelle? Would you, would you reach out to them and just clarify? Yeah. Or, or if, but I'm sure that the Visit Casper folks can, you know, let you know where, what the status is. And maybe it's just at some other, maybe it's sitting on the city's desk and it just hasn't gotten, made its way here. I don't know, but, um, I wanted to close the loop on those because you and I were, were talking about that, that one.
We can just blame Kathy, just send it out.
Steve Kathy, the mayor? Yeah, yeah. That's, that sounds good. So the last thing I had on my list is, uh, the opioid agreement and Heather, this is a legal update, maybe not, but, um, my recollection is you're working, um, with Eric Nelson, uh, city attorney on making some kind of last tweaks to, to, to that memorandum of agreement.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, that's correct. So we're hoping to have something for you to look at, um, possibly approve at the next meeting.
Well, I, that's not quite what I want, um, because the city's going to look at it for approval next Tuesday at their meeting on the twelfth.
Right.
Um, and, uh, if we have, I think the last thing we want to do is have them talk about and approve something and then us be reactive and say, well, we want these changes. So I would like to see that agreement ASAP this week.
Okay.
And then give you any feedback right away if there are other changes or concerns so that you can immediately talk to Eric Nelson about them, or I can talk to Carter about them. Um, so that they can go into that meeting kind of with some level of confidence that the other side, that being us, um, hasn't reviewed and approved it at least informally. Okay. So I don't know if it's, if it's you or if it's Eric or if it's you and Eric or if it's me and you, but that's a this week thing. Okay?
Okay.
All right. Um, yeah.
Just a comment. I think we ought to seriously look at how we as a county buy our hospital back. And I'll give you some ideas I have about it at another time. I just want to throw it out because I know you, you've mentioned it yourself before, the possibilities of it. Interestingly enough, I ran across some information that might be valuable to us. So I just thought I'd get everybody thinking about it.
Okay. Um, we are adjourned and will reconvene.